We're going to call the meeting to order. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118, Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Done. Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri.
Here.
Mazzone.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Venkatesan.
Here.
Dantuno.
Here.
Uh, we have a quorum.
Can everyone stand for the pledge and remain standing afterwards?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Education acknowledges the death of Charles C. Gordon, retired Vice Principal, and expresses its deepest sympathy to his family and friends. Thank you.
Okay, code of ethics is mine. Tonight, the Board, the Board member will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children, and to seek and develop and to maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Thank you. Approval of minutes? I need a motion, please.
Mazzone, motion.
Second?
Francisco will second.
Roll call, please, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Done. Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazzone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for approval of minutes passes?
Thank you. The report of the student rep?
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. We jumped right back into things at Old Bridge High School after a great winter break. It's hard to believe, but the second marking period comes to a close in two weeks. Winter sports have been going well, and multiple athletes have accomplished impressive milestones. Nick Gallo on the ice hockey team has surpassed 100 points, and Krish Patel on the boys' basketball team has scored 1,000 points and counting. Spring sports, physicals, are due on February 1st. The seniors going to Disney had our first meeting this past Friday, and we were all ecstatic to go on the trip in March. Miss O'Reilly and the Drama Department have begun production of the musical Forty Second Street, which will open in March. The Arts Festival will take place on January 29th. Guidance Counselor Week begins on February 3rd, and we are certainly grateful for all the hard work they put into helping us succeed. Finally, the Student Senate will begin selling tickets at the end of the month for our nights-out event, which will take place on Friday, February 7th. This event is open to all students in the high school. We will have inflatables, crafts, a DJ, a band, food, and more. As you can imagine, it takes a lot of help to put this together. We are asking high school parents for donations of drinks and snacks. You can reach out to our advisor, Mrs. Abdike, for more information. Any items will be welcome. Thank you for your support, and have a great night.
Thank you very much. Recognition, we have none. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I do want to say we do have a bit of recognition tonight. As members of the public may or may not know, that the month of January has long been recognized, at least since 2002, by as New Jersey School Board's recognition month. It's a place, takes place to honor the work of local school board members. New Jersey School Boards Association, they started this to raise awareness about the roles of school board members in public education. The School Board Association started this, like I said, in the month of January of 2002. It's about, the month is the time to recognize board members for their volunteer work. And I say volunteer work because a lot of member, a lot of members of the public think that school board members are somehow compensated. They receive no compensation. They are one of the few elected officials that I know that do receive no compensation, no benefits. They're strictly here for the betterment of our schools. It's also time to raise awareness of the school boards and their role in public education. So what do school boards do? School boards make decisions about curriculum, financing, and staffing that comes from the recommendation of the superintendent and his administrative team. They also adopt policies, oversee the budget, set district goals, and hire and evaluate the superintendent. School, school boards serve as the link between the community and the school system. What Old Bridge Township Public School Board members have accomplished in the past year is just a few things that I've taken note to recognize that members of the public may not know. They diligently, this Board diligently performed research to support a very difficult 2004, 2005, 2025 budget. They advocated for student programs in CTE, unify academics, the arts, and athletics. They promoted the school nutrition programs, they promoted to improve them. They performed site visits of all Old Bridge Township Public Schools and participated in bus tours to learn about our sending and pending sending communities. They lobbied for fair school funding and transparency for Old Bridge Township Public Schools, and I know many have done that over the course of the year. And last week, we took a trip to Trenton, and many of us, 12 people from the district, inclusive of many school board members, took part in that. They participate in mandatory training to serve as board members, and they serve as conduits to public information through my office and administrative team. And a lot of that comes with, you know, when something comes up from the public, it's the role of the board members to bring it to my attention prior to bringing it to attention at a public meeting, and many of them do that. My phone is always open to them. We meet. I know that just in the past week, we've been able to accomplish many of the issues that the Board has been presented with and get answers to, so I want to thank them for that having that transparency and that openness to present us with the concerns, and so we can deal with them and address them at the best needs for our public. So, the students of Ms. Groves-Caya's art program, they put together a little art project for you guys. They did all the work, and they present you with that this month to thank you for your work, your volunteer work as school board members. I know Mr. Venkatesan is like, "You arrived and already you're being recognized for all your hard work." So it's interesting that they do it in January. Imagine that when elections used to take place in April and so forth, that it was, you know, halfway through, you spent some time in it. But welcome aboard, and thank you for all your work at the same, at the same time. The second item is that you'll see that tonight we have the, of the letter in reference to this, from the state for the New Jersey CUSAC review. New Jersey CUSAC is the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. It's the review of the school district on matters of instructional program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. In their review, which took place during the course of last year, they have, they found that the district in instructional program had a 78% scoring, fiscal management a 96% scoring, governance a 94% scoring, and operations a 97% scoring, and personnel 100% scoring. So, one of the things that we have to do now is that any area, any area in which we were below an 80%, we would have to have a district improvement plan. So district improvement plans, how would we, how do we address that? How do we get to that, get above the 80%? So, in the instructional program, one of the things that, you know, it, it's one of those areas that you never get 100% for because it's based upon student performance. If student performance in a state standardized test, everyone scored 100, you get 100%, but that's not a reality. As, as a matter of history, we always are in, somewhere in the mid 80s, the low 80s on that area. One of the things they, they did get us for is the health curriculum. They, they reduced us by four points for not adopting a health curriculum. This is one of those areas, and now we have to address that, how we're going to address as a board, and we will work with the Board in the future to come up with that district improvement plan and to address that. The only other area was in the area of governance, and that had to do with the superintendent's evaluation. We would have got 100% in that area, but they reduced by six points there. So that is on the agenda tonight for the Board to review and work together with us to have that district improvement plan. The last thing I want to do is, I just want to, I can't, I can't like go on without acknowledging the passing of Mr. Gordon. Mr. Gordon, at his retirement, was when I entered the district. He was the vice principal at Salk School at the time, and he retired, and I was hired to replace him there, and those were some big shoes to fill. Talk about a beloved person in, in that school who really built a history without, without, throughout the course of the district. The only thing I can say that really was a great thing about it was that through that, I was able to meet his son, who wanted to fill his dad's shoes, and he became a colleague and hired him as a colleague to work in that school, and he's done a great job since. So my condolences go out to Chuck and the rest of the Gordon family. I've, I've gotten to know his brother Wade a little bit, I was a police officer in East Brunswick, so all the condolences go out to the Gordon family, and I'm sure collectively through the community, there's lots of people who feel the same way. That concludes this superintendent's report for today.
Thank you very much. Progress towards goals? The Board will meet February 4th to work on not only the district goals, but the Board goals as well, so that, we will have more on that next month. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Special committee reports?
I have three. Okay. On January 9th, the DEI Committee met, and Dr. Hoker presented information to the committee with assistance from Dr. Calandria. They discussed the Second Step Social Skills Program used in elementary schools, as well as targeted support in middle schools. She discussed that the HIB presentation from the Family Academy Night is available on the district website. Dr. Hoker provided information regarding a reduction of HIB investigations, and HIB investigations being founded due to targeted initiatives such as the Second Step Social Skills Program, increased counselor lessons, using restorative circles throughout the district, programs such as PBIS, which provide instruction for students in personal responsibility, inclusiveness, generosity, helpfulness, and trustworthiness, as well as an array of motivating rewards for students who demonstrate good character. All of this has led to a reduction of HIB investigations, and Dr. Hoker provided a detailed inform, provided detailed information broken down into multiple categories. She also discussed the benefits of standardization of school committees district-wide. Dr. Calandria talked about new and upcoming initiatives which will help to bring to get together as many different students from different cultures as possible under the Old Bridge Rooted in Power Initiative. In February, Character ambassadors from elementary schools to high schools will join together to take a metaphorical trip around the world. They will return in March to host an assembly or host small groups to read books to students in an effort to help students see themselves in literature. The Care Committee meeting was the same night directly after it. The committees were kind of, they overlapped somewhat. So during the Care Committee portion of our meeting, Ms. Rachel O'Neill, district instructional ELA coach, provided us with the opportunity to participate in the same type of restorative circles that our students experience. In a circle, we took turns responding to questions posed to us and also engaged in the metacognitive process of noticing how we each thought and felt during the exercise. There are many ways to structure and utilize restorative circles, but the but the process is built around feeling seen, heard, valued, and empowered. Then on the 13th, we had a technology committee meeting. Mr. Yanazuli, Director of Technology, hosted a presentation about just basically how the flow of the year happens with respect to technology and at which times during the year they prep for testing. They evaluate devices, inventory of devices, which result in repairing, replacing inventory, and ordering new technology. He did mention that in the tech world, it's really difficult because although they want to prepare and have inventory of supplies, they also don't want to have an abundance of supplies and make sure they're not overspending. We had a discussion for future meetings about how we can elementary schools can still do a lot of hands-on activities. We talked about devices that can last 10 years. K-2 devices may only have one grade depending on what we have at the end of the year. Some of them don't have to have a full refresh. They can be partial refreshed. But just things that we have to look at going forward. And he basically explained like how the flow of their whole year happens in the technology department. And the next meeting for technology is going to be March 17th.
That might change with the new-
It might change, yeah. With the new committee chairs and stuff like that. And different days that might change. But that's a tentative meeting date for now.
Any other comments or conversation on the committees?
The one thing from the CARE DEI combo meeting that was a big takeaway is Dr. Hoker was saying how we're finally getting back to the pre-COVID character counts. Like we've readjusted, our academics have, you know, picked up from post-COVID. But now the district is getting back into the full swing of the character and the practices that we had going into that. So that was nice to hear and seeing the results from that. So thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to have the hearing of residents on any agenda items only. Is the book at the-
Yep.
Okay, just please sign the binder and-
I appreciate it when districts provide a moment of silence when faculty or staff members pass away. Tonight, we had a moment of silence for Charles Gordon, a former school administrator in the Olbridge school system. Not many of you up on the stage knew Mr. Gordon. So I'd like to take a brief moment to share with you a little bit about Charlie. Charles Gordon was a teacher and administrator in Olbridge for well over 30 years. Mr. Gordon, just like so many other educators, has spent his life working hard for the betterment of others, especially children. Mr. Gordon always had a special place in his heart and found time for those students who have fought through personal obstacles to achieve personal success. He also took pride in finding the student who thought they were going about their life unnoticed, not ruffling any feathers or causing any waves. However, when all actuality, these types of students were bright lights of academics, independence, respect, responsibility, and maturity. He found those children who thought they were just like every other bulb in the box in his own way twisted and worked them to show them that they too can shine as bright as the rest and that they did not go unnoticed. You see, I've been very fortunate. I've had four influential people in my life. My grandfather, my father, my stepfather, and Charlie. You will notice the word "father" was embedded in the first three monikers. But Charlie was like the father of me as well. Charlie was part of the Wilkes-Barre Crew who came down from Pennsylvania and helped build the educational system here in Olbridge. Charlie helped lead Sandberg back in its glory days and took that experience over to Salk with him. Charlie loved working with and being next to omnipotent leaders like Joe Widra and Ken Popovich. He didn't have to have the focus on him. Charlie wasn't about himself. He was about others. Charlie had no need for recognition with awards, signs, or plaques. Charlie would not have been a fan of Twitter or X or Instagram recognition either. And actually, now that I think about it, he probably won't even know how to use Twitter, X, or Instagram. Technology was not his forte. While Charlie was quiet and reserved, he was also very creative and loved developing programs for students, such as Outward Bound and Project Respect. Charlie was a fine arts enthusiast, often finding poems and writing poems and creating beautiful artwork. In reflection toward the latter part of his career, I felt like I was a piece of his art. While he was no Da Vinci, and I am definitely not the Mona Lisa, we two were bonded together. I can remember wanting his attention so badly, like a child sitting on Santa's lap, asking for that special present. Pam Ruskowski, his secretary, would see me giving the side-eye peek into his office to see if he was there and if he had time for me. She would give me a smile and wave me into his office. Charlie presented me with so many priceless experiences, such as sitting in with him during uncomfortable parent meetings and sitting with him during disciplinary meetings with students. Charlie taught me not to be a yeller, to understand that students were kids and needed guidance, not fear. I would spend countless hours with him, asking millions of questions. However, he would never answer one of those single questions. Instead of giving me the answers, he would prod me to help me discover the answer for myself, then would help mold and sculpt that answer. I will never forget when he told me it was time to learn how to do middle school scheduling. I was so excited. I wanted to impress him. He gave me a blank schedule, and I asked, "Are you going to show me how to do it, Charlie?" And he responded in his calm tone, "No, you'll figure it out. And when you do, come back to me and we will discuss." I must have spent days trying to figure it out with all the variables of special education, basic skills, honors courses, et cetera, et cetera. He wanted me to learn organically, not through a crib sheet. True learning, not taking a shortcut. While Charlie taught me so many lessons, one message that he shared with me will always stick with me. He said, "Do what's right because it's right and deal with the politics later." Those who know me professionally know that I live this message. I have tried over the years to lead, teach, and develop the next generation of administrators and educators as he's done with me. Charlie's sons, Wade, Eric, and Chuck, need to know how special their father was. He was a father to me. When his family was preparing for his funeral, his son Chuck sent me a picture of his father's refrigerator. The refrigerator was filled with pictures of all his lovely and adorable grandchildren, as well as a recent picture of my three children. That was his way of telling me that he loved me. With his passing, Charlie taught me one last priceless lesson. Never be afraid to tell someone you love them. I never told Charlie I loved him. And I have to live that, knowing that for the rest of my life. I've learned my lesson. Charlie may be gone, but I will never forget him. I am fortunate to have had him in my life and for him allowing me into his. He believed in me, and I can only hope that I've made him proud. While this year would have been the 20th year where I have honored Charlie at both Salk and Grissom graduation ceremonies by bestowing the Charles Gordon Award Honor to the student who quietly shines and makes other people's lives better, I would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me these few minutes to honor Mr. Gordon here tonight. And lastly, Charlie, I love you. Thank you.
That was beautifully said.
Very well done, Dr. Rika. If I can, because it was a beautiful message, just the point of leg levity that Tony brought up about whether Charlie would be able to work on Twitter or Facebook or anything like that. I remember my first day going into the office, and there was a computer there that it wasn't brand new, by any stretch of the imagination. And I put it on, and I kid you not, it was the startup mode for the computer, like it was the first day it's ever been used. And that computer was probably in the office for like three years prior to. And Pam said, "No, he'd never really used that." So, right on point. Great man. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to close that. Policy, I need a motion?
Giordano, a motion?
Mizone, a second.
Any discussion? In everyone's attachment, part of their agenda is the final listing for the committees. Personnel, the chairperson will be Elena Francisco, with members Christina Mizone, Matt Solakowski, and Jen Dantuno. Curriculum and policy, the chairperson will be Jay Slade, with members Sal Giordano, Elena Francisco, and Marjorie Jodri. On the operations, which will include buildings and grounds, technology, and transportation, the chairperson will be Rich Dunn, with committee members Christina Mizone, Matt Solakowski, and Jay Slade. Student life will include athletics, extracurriculars, DEIB, and care. I will be the chairperson, with members Rich Dunn, Marjorie Jodri, and Kiran Van Katason. Food service, Christina Mizone will be the chairperson, with committee members Jay Slade, Matt Solakowski, and myself. Special services, the chairperson will be Marjorie Jodri, with committee members Rich Dunn, Elena Francisco, and Kiran Van Katason. Finance, shared services, long-range and strategic planning, chairperson will be Sal Giordano, Rich Dunn, Jay Slade, and Kiran Van Katason. Negotiations, the chairperson will be Elena Francisco, with committee members Sal Giordano, Christina Mizone, and Jay Slade. Our liaisons for SEPTA and CPAG will be Marjorie. President Council will be myself. NJSPA will be Elena and Marjorie. And then the Health and Safety with the OBEA will be Jay Slade, with either Marjorie or myself in attendance. I did get an email from a member of the public asking about the shared drive that I was talking about last week with the board. That was for the board members to look at prior to the meeting so that we could ask questions and bring some more feedback for the committee members. So my understanding is that's not necessarily going to be open to the public. That's going to be for internal board use. If you have any questions regarding that, please send an email.
I have a question. That doesn't exist yet, correct?
The drive and folder exists, and the template is there. But that hasn't been shared out to the board until the policy tonight was approved to approve the new committees as listed with the assignments.
So then, I would put the notes that I-
Yeah, use your regular notes. We're working the actual form. The template is a work in progress. But I'm going to tweak a couple of things. And once it is available and everything's shared out, you'll get an email from me.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Can I have, I have something to say. Can I be taken off of food services, please? I have no kids in the system.
Sure.
Thank you.
Who is not on? Is there someone that would like to take Matt's?
Can I take a spot?
Well, just for the record, there is an actual resolution in Board Secretary and Board Business. So you can wait until then to amend it. It's Resolution Number Two later in the meeting, so.
iPod?
All good. But I do have, I noted the request for Matt to be removed from food service.
And Elena, too, one. Roll call, any more discussion on any of the policies that are in tonight's agenda? Okay, roll call, please.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Katason?
Yes.
Dunn? And Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution One for policy passes.
For curriculum and professional development, items one through four, need a motion?
Mizone, a motion?
Francisco will go.
Jodri will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Katason?
Yes.
Dunn? Francisco?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four for curriculum and professional development passes.
Finance, item one through 14. I need a motion, please? Francisco will motion.
Giordano, second.
Any discussion?
I just had a quick question to Mr. Setadino. Are the CUSAC scores that we discussed, is there a way to define what they mean? Like, we miss points. How does that get broken down to like punitive?
There's an Excel spreadsheet that kind of goes through that. Is that part of the attachments? Okay. We can send that to the board members as part of the attachments.
Jay, do you mean is there any consequence or something?
Yeah, I mean like, right, you lose points. I know we're going to have a summary of how we're going to make ourselves look, how we're not look better, be better. Just, you know, what the consequences are.
My understanding is if you're below 80 too many years in the row, then the state can step in?
Well, you'd have to continuously be a district that doesn't operate within the framework. But as of right now, the only area you have to do it in, any place that you're less than 80. We've already appealed the student assessment piece, and they said they're looking at our spring scores and going to make the correct adjustment on that. But that'll be part of our DIP, our District Improvement Plan. So that won't take this away, but it might help us, you know, in securing our district improvement plan that we've already met that student piece, the student assessment piece. So we have to show in that area of curriculum, instruction and program that we are working towards an 80% or higher. So in the area of assessment and in the area of curriculum, the two areas we have to make adjustments.
So the only part of the CUSAC score that the board can help with is the policy passing and Mr. Setadino or whomever the superintendent is, like the assessment. So the goal, we've already said, is to do that already in May. So the governance part that we can do, I guess I'd like to kick it back to the policy committee to discuss and revisit the health policy. Can we, curriculum, well, they're one. Curriculum and policy are the same committee. Where do we, you know, are we comfortable keeping that hit on the CUSACs? Or do we want to move forward to gain those points back? Because then with those two improvements, we're already back on track to being within the framework we're supposed to be.
Can I clarify, or can you clarify for me? So you appealed to the state because you believe our assessments weren't properly evaluated?
No, we appealed based upon that we know our spring scores are better than the previous years in which they base this upon.
Okay. And then our score can go up if they deem that to be true?
Correct.
And then will we still need a district improvement plan if our score goes above 80?
It is, if it goes above 80, then no.
Okay. And when we find out if our score goes-
It's in the late spring.
Late spring. Okay. So we might not have to do anything at all?
It's possible.
Okay.
You want, I have this feeling too, like, you know, the student assessment piece is a little more subjective, you know? So do they knock down a few points on student assessment piece because, you know, you don't adopt a curriculum? Who says? Maybe not. I've seen funny things happen with Trenton, so. You're probably thinking the same thing I'm thinking.
One question from my side. Have we been doing this historically, or this is the first time we connected this?
Every three years.
Every three years? Okay. How did we do the three years back?
We met all the-
Wait, because of COVID.
Well, the prior year part of that, we had met the goals.
Okay. All right. I think per this, I think we need to go back to the Commissioner of Education with their district improvement plan. And how we are planning to improve the instruction and program category, which we are at 78. And that's the only action item, I think, we need to work on, right?
Correct. Okay. That is correct. We lost four points for the curriculum. So if that wasn't the case, it would have been 82. And then any other points we make up with just assessment pieces.
Thank you.
You're going to send that to us? I was trying to write it down as you were reporting, but-
The Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
I also, I didn't realize it was in the agenda too until just now. Any other discussion on finance? Roll call, please.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Katason?
Yes.
Dunn is absent. Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 14 for finance passes.
Athletics, item one and two, need a motion, please?
Jodri will move it.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Katason?
Yes.
Dunn is absent. Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Dan, Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for athletics- Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for athletics passes.
Non-certificated personnel, item one, need a motion, please?
Mizone, a motion.
Second.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn is absent.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for non-certified personnel office passes.
Okay, there's nothing for non-certified personnel operation, so we'll move on to non-certificated personnel other, items one through eight. Can I have a motion, please?
Jodri will move.
Mizone will second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn is absent.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight for non-certified personnel other passes.
Okay, certificated personnel, items one through thirteen, can I have a motion, please?
Slade will move.
Second. Mizone will second. Thank you.
I believe I do have one administrative correction on this. It is a resolution.
It's number six?
Number six, yeah.
On the attack, on the separate page, it actually says number forty-six. It's number six.
Yeah.
And the motion that's on that separate page is actually incorrect. It goes with motion number six, which is a six-period coverage. This is, was already in place, it just needed to be extended. And we have one of our new hires here today. Can we invite up Kelsey Anne Gaiser, please? Mr. Venkatesan, would you like to stand and take a picture with our new hire?
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, we take pictures here. And you're teaching phys ed at the middle school?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ten jumping jacks, that's it. Thank you. Welcome to the district. Any other discussion on certificated personnel?
Did we have a motion on that?
Yes. Slade and Mizone. And when you're ready, roll call, please.
Dunn is absent.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through thirteen for certificated personnel passes.
Thank you. We have nothing on non-certificated personnel transportation, so we'll move forward to transportation. Can I have a motion on items one and two, please?
Giordano, a motion.
Thank you.
Francisco will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn is absent.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for transportation passes.
Thank you. Supplies, equipment, and services, items one through three, can I have a motion, please?
Slade will move.
Mizone will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Giordano?
Just one.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
Nope, go for it.
I had this clarification from Mr. David Wydell already, just wanted to call that out. I know we, we are a Microsoft shop here, meaning we use Microsoft Teams and everything. I questioned as to why we are using Zoom, even it's a small amount, why do we use Zoom? But I got a clarification that we use Zoom for more external interface. Primarily, we use Microsoft Teams more for internal, and that works a lot better. But when we go to external companies or vendors or anyone, I think Zoom is pretty much, we know, know how it works. So thanks for clarifying that.
That's a very good question. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn is absent.
Francisco?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Okay. Miscellaneous, items one through seven, can I have a motion, please? Mizone, a motion.
Sorry, go ahead. I'll second.
Thank you.
I have a question. For number seven, the Bridge of Books Foundation, is that what we discussed in our curriculum meeting, Dr. Tuohy, this donation from the library? Is that part of that? No.
No, this is from Mr. Daley, an outside group that's donating books to his school.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty cool. That's a lot of books.
Yeah.
Congratulations to Soon to Madison Park. Enjoy your books. Any other discussion?
Yeah, thanks to, you know, Mr. Daley for working together with an external organization and getting, you know, some good donations. I think maybe we should find what is the secret Mr. Daley's following and maybe deposit along to other schools. Or Mr. Cittadino, if you know the secret, please.
I think it comes down to, I'm just looking at, I think it comes down to principals responding to a request from them. I just got an email over the weekend that I worked at with Mr. Wydell. Cooper School is their second year receiving that and their maintenance goes and picks up the books. It's a substantial amount that, you know, you have principals putting them in the back of their cars, driving them here, so. So, we do have multiple schools also receiving that donation as well.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
That's pretty cool. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn is absent.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through seven for miscellaneous passes.
Board Secretary and Board Business, items one and two, can we have a motion?
Francisco will motion.
Mizone will second.
Okay. And now we can go into discussion where Matt would like to be off of food service and Elena, you would like to be put on?
Yeah.
Any opposition from the board on that? Any other discussion, Mr. Wydell, on any of Board Secretary business?
Nope. Not at this time.
Okay. Roll call, please.
So we will have an amended version to, for Francisco. Okay. Mizone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn is absent.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through two for Board Secretary and Board Business passes.
Hearing of the residents on any district item. We'll close that portion. Any old business? I know the Food Service Committee meeting was originally mentioned to be this Thursday. We're gonna postpone it so that the new committee assignments can find a date. So if that was on your calendar, please take it off so that you don't have to come out in the cold on Thursday. Any new business?
I have some. So, last year during Food Service Committee, it was brought to our attention that there was three elementary schools not receiving breakfast. With that and the help from the board, help from admin, we were able to implement the breakfast back into shura starting January second. And I know we're working on the other two elementary schools to get that back implemented. So, Mr. Wydell, thank you for your help with that. The committee, thank you for your help with that. Also, I know last week, the students of Grissom were able to take a field trip to the Old Bridge Library. And they, they had an amazing time. They loved it. I just wish that we were able to implement more field trips for these kids because I feel like we approved so many spots. And I understand it's hard with, you know, busing and the nurses, but they look, they look forward to the, to these field trips. And I just wish we were able to add more into the school year. I think it would benefit the kids, it would benefit the teachers. So if there's something that we can do to try to add more field trips to the, for the kids, I think that would be great for everyone.
I was actually going to ask that question, not necessarily today, but is the biggest obstacle to field trips, the transportation cost?
Well, transportation, nursing, and is, you know, is a curriculably related. I know there's a lot of opport, well, there's been several opportunities for field trips within the community. It gets more difficult when you go outside the community. So ones like the library, we used to use the ice rink. Again, that became more difficult too with nursing. Got to promise you, every time we went to the ice rink, there was an injury. So, you need to have a nurse, you need to have a nurse there. And it's tough because, you know, we don't have ample amounts of nurses that we could leave the school uncovered, so. These are some of the challenges we, you know, ever since, you know, there's a nursing shortage as well as...
Teacher.
Yes, teaching shortage and everything else that as, you know, times have changed. There's definitely, definitely more health concerns of our, within our students as they are in our settings. Health concerns that may not have been there years ago. We educate in a more inclusive environment, more students who come to school with feeding tubes and everything else. So you have to have full-time nursing within the schools and it makes it more difficult to get ample nurses from outside schools. Even, you know, getting a service was even easier back in the day, just, you know, you have a service to go on a field trip and so with that. And that's even become way too costly and very expensive, very hard to get, so. But if we have elementary ones with inside the community, it's a lot easier.
So after we finish fixing the state formula and get more money, then we can send the kids on more field trips. Sounds like a fun, but definitely something to keep thinking. And Christina, you're a big advocate for the breakfast, so thank you for your hard work on that as well. Any other new business?
Anything you want to add on the nursing, on the field trips?
I'm just sitting here thinking a lot, I think more of our elementary schools probably do some of those trips than you might be aware of, so I want to get a list and we can share that with you so you can see what they actually are going to. Because I know there's other schools that go to the library and the police station. I think you're, you hit it on the head. You know, there's a difference between going to the library and going to the ice skating rink. And we are short nurses. We have one less nurse in district this year. And, you know, add to that any of the additional health concerns, it's, it's been difficult. And what we found is even when we do hire a nurse from outside, they're not as reliable as our own staff. And I know we had one trip earlier this year and we were down to the, the kids were loaded on the bus and the nurse wasn't there and what were we gonna do? And were we gonna, you know, you don't want to cancel a trip when you've got a whole grade level of students sitting on the bus, ready to go. But we would've been leaving our building uncovered. Fortunately, she arrived in time and was able to make the trip. But we deal with that when we're looking at those, at those trips and really trying to make sure that we have the right staff.
You're talking about the police station. I think I still have a picture somewhere of like our fifth grade teachers in the police station. We kind of put them behind the jail cell, so it was definitely like a fun trip back then. Anything else on new business?
I, I'm sorry. Did you have something to say?